Oh, that's what's good.
That's better.
Yeah.
That's good on it.
We're pulling this out. She's the good.
Are we laying? Somewhere.
Or her. Michelle Earl. You know.
You gotta make sure you.
Good work today.
I mean, she's, she's, I think I have conflict.
That's one we do it.
Can you? Apparently.
I like that, but this is too flat, right? See? But you don't get a lot of shadows. This is just the south box, but the shadow though. Alright, thanks, Zeb. It's too much shadow.
Mm-hmm.
The only thing to do there is to pull those flags forward, you know?
Okay, that's good.
If not, I'll take the shadow and post, yeah. That's much better.
Do you want shadow on the back?
Both of them.
One of them?
That's good. See, that's too much shadow.
Yeah, that's too much, yeah. That's better.
Yeah, we'll go with that.
Okay. Do you wanna crop in or?
You know, like taking photos and signing autographs. Woo! This is what people at Richard feels like.
Actually, that's all night time.
Yeah.
It feels very good. Don't turn your three down every day. The Richard maybe autographs are like fake, they're not a little sun up.
Dude, that's a good one.
I mean, I've rosted. I still have.
She likes to bathe and drink coffee.
I really.
Okay, okay, give it, give it a little bit. Thirty-nine, six hundred. Oh, you're good, you're good, I'm just testing. Way smoother.
You ever heard of that place?
Yep, I have.
That was garden?
Oh.
Better.
That was, that was.
Right?
Better shadow.
We used to go there all the time when I lived.
Then it needs more light.
Mm-hmm.
That's the first place I saw him.
Lights beautiful.
Oh, oh.
Yeah.
He need another autograph.
Yeah, oh, that looks much better. Yeah.
So much nicer.
So much nicer.
Take it even closer.
Okay. Yeah, me too.
Nice. Perfect, look at that, the flag looks beautiful.
It does.
Okay. Zeb, could you stand there for a sec, please? Yeah. Nice.
Oh, better. He should pull this around a little bit, he's getting shadow on his side. Is that what you want?
It's just.
It's gonna be a pretty picture.
I think it's pretty.
Oh, way better.
Yeah. Okay, do one more.
That's nice, perfect.
Perfect, okay.
Thank you. Good call. That's good.
Rock on, people.
Alright, we're in business. Thirty-five is fine for this, maybe.
Yes. Alright.
No, no, we're good, we can shoot very fine.
Okay.
This is connected. Cause it doesn't know which one to.
Yeah.
That's sharp and nice.
Mm-hmm. Can I repeat it? Oh, yeah.
Nice, huh?
Yeah. Yes.
Too hot, but let me take it down.
No, I think it looks.
If you push it in, it'll go one stop.
Oh, okay.
Otherwise, ten come stop.
Oh, okay.
Nice. Beautiful.
Yeah.
Give me a second, I need to do one.
Yes. The, the box is showing up in the.
That's okay, I'll take that and post. You're good, yeah. We got a little more fill from this side.
Okay, let me get this out of the way.
Huh?
Let me pull the flag out of here, the white one, it's not in it.
Take it.
Will you make the, the one, the random tag?
Thirty-seven. Slightly to the right, okay, that's good. Check focus.
Yeah.
Huh?
There we go.
Yeah, that's awesome. Lights better, right, we got some fill on him now?
Yeah, it looks good.
Yeah?
Yeah.
They're gonna start getting comments, "We can't see, it's not on, it's not up."
Nice.
Hopefully you're not getting so early on, we have.
That was, that's slightly more. You could.
Yeah, it's nice.
Stick it down.
Tell me, tell me something good.
Are you the first one?
I'm going about ten minutes.
Well, we haven't done this in person. No, I actually wondered if I missed a lot. We're almost done.
Check focus.
Yeah, sure.
Alright, we're ready.
That's good. Okay.
Steady, please, big smiles. Just a minute, please.
Yeah, oh, that's good.
Big smile, look at me, please. Oh, lovely, yeah, your smile is great.
Oh, that's great.
Great smile, no, keep smiling, you have a really nice smile, yeah. You have a really nice smile, yeah, smile, please. There you go. Lovely, I think that's a winner.
That's good.
Nice.
Light and calm.
Alright, you're great, you're good, who's next?
Alright, everybody line up, we're rolling now. Well.
Who's?
Psych.
Yeah.
Ready, Zeb? Yeah?
Do you wanna take the pin out of your ear?
He likes it there, yeah.
Okay. Just who you are, huh?
Hold it, focus.
It would be probably all of us.
That's good.
Focus is good?
Yeah.
Steady, please.
She tapped, she buttoned her jacket.
You wanna try one buttoning your jacket?
With the button?
Yeah, with the button, just one shot, yeah, nice.
Oh, another one.
Focus, yeah.
Focus is good.
Right, please? Head down slightly, yeah, nice.
One more.
Focus?
Yeah.
Double click to check focus always.
That's good.
No, sorry, it's off, just a minute. Steady, please. Yeah, steady, sir. How's that?
Feel better.
That's sharp, thank you. Five minus.
Yeah.
So just keep it a hundred percent because I'll crop in, you know?
Okay. Stay in, stay in the bank.
Do you all want to stay facing the camera or do you want to have?
Oh, I don't care, whatever you tell me.
Does it matter?
Whatever, whatever he do.
Does everybody want him to stand on?
Yeah, you're going on websites.
You're the boss man, follow your lead, you know what looks best.
Steady, please. Head down slightly, yeah. Okay.
That's good.
Please turn to the side, yeah, a little more, little more. Now look at me, please, head towards me, yeah, nice, steady, please stay that way. No, that's good. How's that?
Oh, better.
Head down slightly, double click? Let's get some eyes on this. Let's get some eyes on this.
Who?
Emmy or who's the, who's, maybe look. Zeb, yeah, I think we should shoot them all like this, you know? Instead of looking straight.
Oh, that was.
We'll redo the other two, but.
Absolutely, guy.
I think that is better than that, you know, staring straight.
Did a little turn?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll redo your picture, yeah. I think you're good, yeah.
You're good.
There, we can redo this.
Now. I think that's better. No, I don't know those telephones, yeah, or something.
You what?
I don't know if they're telephones, yeah.
Yeah, like that, just look this way.
Yeah.
Turn your, turn your feet this way.
Yeah. You'll have to look. Yeah, just face.
But don't, don't do it.
Well, you're getting light from the windows.
That's, no, they won't affect this at all.
Okay.
Steady, sir, very nice. Focus?
Looks good.
Now?
Good.
Very nice. Nice, nice? Double click?
That one's off.
Okay, the one before that is okay?
Yeah.
Thank you.
The other two before it.
Well, that's not my good side.
Yeah.
Think if I turn my back, that's probably better.
Thank you. Ready, big smile, very nice. Focus is good, right?
Yeah.
Steady, please?
No, I thought I'm tying.
That's good.
Head down.
Put your chin down just slightly, yeah.
And smile, Zeb. Yeah.
Santa's coming, excited.
Why's he not shooting? There you go, nice.
Oh, that's good.
Focus?
Yeah, it's good.
Good, thank you.
Alright.
Why did you miss that?
Who's next?
Amy, you're next. You'll take your picture.
That's a lot nicer, that light, looking sideways, you know?
Yeah, sure. Body goes that way, face comes here.
Tell me if it's focused.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Chin down just slightly. Or glasses, that's.
Yeah, that's right, chin down.
Yeah, that's better, okay.
Focus?
Yeah.
Look at me, please, big smiles. Nice, lovely, one more?
Oh, that's really good.
Lovely, oh, you're clear, okay, the one before that is good, isn't it?
Yeah.
You got it?
Yeah, this one, yeah.
Nice.
Good?
Uh-huh, very nice. Thank you.
Thanks, you're good, who's next?
Well, we'll splat.
Yes.
Steady, please, let me focus, okay?
Alright, that's good.
Focus is good?
Yeah. You put your chin down just a tiny hair.
And look at me, and smile.
Yeah, that's right.
Smile, please, yeah? Lovely. Thank you. That's okay.
Yeah, that's good.
These are good, I like this side angle.
You got David?
Oh, I mean, you're the same.
Alright, move over in between the two flags, a little bit more.
Okay, it's perfect. Chin down?
Body towards her. Head towards us, harvest.
Head down slightly, chin down? No, chin, chin. Back straight, yeah.
Yeah, there you go.
Face to at least a little more, yeah, beautiful. Nice? Nice, that's good.
Yeah. Yeah.
One more real quick, just to, you know?
Just for fun.
Just for fun, just for insurance.
Smile, smile! Perfect.
Thank you. That's very nice.
Yeah.
Wow, I'm glad we got this light.
Yeah. Alright.
Perfect, yeah.
Do you want the, the pumpkin that everybody else has on?
Thanks for catching.
We should pass his ads around. We're vicious.
Yes.
What's your name? What's your name?
Lisa Mike.
I go behind your chain.
Take a focus.
What's your name? Fine.
Chin down slightly, please? Huh? Nice, very nice. Steady, sir. Focus, just a minute, one more.
Oh, do another one.
Do a smile, please, big smile, yeah, there you go.
Santa's coming, be happy!
Is it focused?
It's a little soft.
Really?
Yeah.
Steady, sir, big smiles.
Oh, perfect.
Nice, just one more real quick, yeah.
Yeah.
Big smiles, please, yeah, look at me. Very nice, I think we got that.
Oh, very nice, alright. Yeah, that one. Why did you just hit this? What do you do, five minus, how do you do that? You just hit minus. Yeah.
Perfect. Focus?
Yep.
Very nice. Steady, sir, look at me, beautiful. Nice, bigger smile, please? Nice, got it. I can tell, yeah. Oh, just a minute.
There's something right there.
There's something there, I'll take that off and post.
Okay.
Yeah, I can't tell what it is.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, looks great.
Looks great. Man, this meeting probably has to be nice.
Alright. Looks good.
Clyde, please, just, okay. You're turning too much. Yeah, yeah, perfect. Steady, please, big smiles. Head towards me a little bit more? And this way? Yeah. Don't lean your body back, yeah. Okay, that's good, perfect. Excellent, steady, please, how's that, focus is good?
Better, yeah, that looks really good.
Big smile? Thank you. Yeah, oh, that's really nice.
Okay. Is this the last one?
Yeah.
Does he want, do you want the pin in your jacket? Okay. Okay, there we go.
Tell your face to a three here.
Yeah, there we go.
Steady, please. Head down slightly, yeah?
Looks good.
Big smiles? Nice, lovely.
Oh, that's good, yeah.
Got it, thank you.
Is that, is that everybody?
Turn sideways, please, yeah.
Let, let me fix your, fix your string right there. Yeah, that's better. Perfect.
Focus? No, that's okay, we're taking focus.
Oh, no.
No, right?
No. Wish you moved.
Now?
No.
Please, steady, please, I'm just gonna focus from here. Yeah, that's why I can't get to the center. That's good. Steady, please, look at me. Turn your shoulders towards me, please, yeah.
There we go.
Steady, please? Focus? Focus is good?
Yes.
Steady, please? Big smile? Thank you. One more, one more, real quick, big smile?
Happy, happy, happy.
Thank you. There you go.
Alright, that's good.
Yeah. So, let's do a quick check, huh? We got everybody, we got. We didn't mark it, huh, Zeb's?
No, we didn't.
She was one of the first ones. Yeah, she's like maybe three, three.
Yeah, there you go.
Oh, yes, that's right, yeah.
Looks good, double check.
There it's the band, this is not.
Very, very missionary.
Oh, you're welcome.
I appreciate it.
Kinda make y'all work good, you're just doing great things for the county, so, you know?
You gotta work hard to make us look good.
This was easy.
This is a beautiful face. Wow. It is a heart, a heart.
That's amazing, great, great idea, yeah. Very nice.
Alright.
Oh, no, no worries, we'll just take our time and pack up a little bit, yeah. Not take our time, but you'll have something, what time's?
We'll try to get out of your way as quickly.
Let's put everything in the hallway.
Okay.
Yeah, we just want, it's better to have it here than to like come in and be like.
Coming early, that makes a difference.
Yeah, I wanted to check.
See the room.
Do some tests.
That's a workout.
Yeah. Check, 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 check. Can you hear me, Donovan? Did Jared get the cat out of the truck? Did you get the cat?
No.
Sorry. You, you will, you will get it. Thank you. Oh, my gosh, I lost it. You will get it. Sorry. Well, that's weird. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's it, yeah. Absolutely.
I got, I'll look.
Leah, Felicity says I think you look like a...
Pleasing him.
Do you?
Pleasing him.
That's why I figured... Leah. This is a Christmas bar.
Oh, I'm fixing to remind you.
I forgot.
I'm fixing to remind you.
Alright, everybody ready? Alright. Officially, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for your patience. We were called to order this special meeting in the Randolph County Board of Commissioners. And again, thank you for your patience as we've gone through this sort of re-upping our new board realignment and our new county commissioner and update our website and all the things that go along with that. Make sure that the public knows, can put a face with a name and all the other issues that might come into play. But, so with that, we thank you again. This is, as I said, a special call meeting of the Board of County Commissioners to deal with our ARPA fund, funding, which has to be encumbered or spent by December 31st. So, Zeb and Will and staff have been working on that and the projects that we've designated. And they're going to go through these three items, I think, that we have on our agenda tonight, four. And I'll turn it over to Zeb.
Again, thank you all, everybody, for your patience. Took a little bit longer than expected, but off we go. This is a meeting a couple of years in the making. I think you've all known at some point we might have to have a meeting at this point to kind of make sure we have fully allocated our ARPA funding. That's American Rescue Plan Act money that came down from the federal government. And as the chairman said, by the end of the fiscal, by the end of the fiscal year, we need to have obligated. And so, we are at a point where we feel confident we can get that done tonight. Will's here and gonna kind of serve as the master of ceremonies as we run through this list of items that we want to get before you. And first thing he wants to do is acknowledge, we have our ARPA team here. And that group of individuals has seen rules change weekly for the last three years and tried to keep pace with it so that we could make sure when we do make these purchases, we've done them correctly. And ultimately, one, we've been efficient for the citizens, and two, no money gets sent back to the treasury at the end of this. So I'm gonna turn it over to Will, let him lead off our ceremonies, for lack of a better word, and give him a chance to introduce our ARPA team.
Ceremonies might be a stretch, but I know that the ARPA team is excited that we've gotten to this point. This is the ARPA team, we don't have this one set up. Test, test. Okay, so... So the ARPA team is here, I'd like to have them stand and be recognized because, you know, as county government... As county government, we're used to dealing with federal funds all the time, and there's always hoops to jump through. And the average citizen doesn't care what kind of hoops we have to jump through, they just want to benefit from the programs. ARPA was a whole different game, would you all agree? Between procurement regulations and eligibility, specialized eligibility, internal control policies that had to be updated, and now, you know, we'll talk this evening about sub-recipient, it was just a whole different game. And they were very dedicated and really stuck with it, devoted a tremendous amount of time to understanding what was possible for us and what we had to do to protect ourselves. Because we said from the very beginning, we didn't want to have to pay anything back. We wanted to use all these dollars successfully, but not have to pay anything back.
You have the agenda?
I've got the agenda. I just don't have the slides in front of me. So I was gonna go over the agenda very quickly, so you see the madness to our method. So we've been working really hard to try to get the projects to this point. And as the chairman said, we had to commit by December the 31st. And so, we've been working to try to pull all these together. The first item here is to kind of wrap up a few things. There's a couple of bids to, we'd like for you to consider. Then there's a budget amendment. Once we do that, then we know how much money is left. And with that amount of money, we will be using that to treat the Piedmont Tribe Water Authority as a sub-recipient for our connection with Ashboro line. That was the biggest project we have in our ARPA listing. So we have that to do. And then the third thing is, in the event we have program income, which is a whole different game to play, that we have something identified for that. And then finally, we'll wrap it up with something that's not ARPA, but is time-sensitive, and we ask that you would consider that tonight as well, too. So the first thing is our final projects. There's paging system equipment that we've talked about. The board put money aside several years ago for that project. When we started to do the tower, the paging project kind of got morphed into that as well, too. But we have paging equipment that we can use ARPA funds for. And Jared's gonna come up and present you with the bids for that.
Good afternoon. So with our paging project, well, we have two different types of radio systems, so I'll start with that. You've heard of the Viper system, that's the one that gets talked about the most. We also have a VHF paging system. And, yeah. We've used this paging system for more than 30 years, and in some type of form. It's a single site currently, and we've, there's a single point of failure with this system. So that's concerned us, although it has been a very reliable, hardy system. We occasionally have complaints from fire departments on the fringes of the county that say that their pagers don't go off on really hot days, or, you know, when the leaves are out on the, you know, the foliage is heavy. We occasionally have those complaints. So we took this opportunity to study our system and have a company make recommendations on what could make this more reliable and have a better coverage. The image on the left is a computer simulation from Mission Critical, our consultant, that shows an estimated coverage range of what we have with our current system. That's paged off of Dave's mountain tower, the fire tower there. I think this map is probably a little bit conservative. It doesn't look like we have good coverage, but like I said, for the most part, we're happy with this system, or we have been for a long time. We tasked Mission Critical to design a new system with a multi-site that would increase our reliability on the system, it would eliminate some of these single points of failures. And they decided to go off of three sites. The Mount Shepherd Viper Site, the Ashboro DOT Viper Site, and then the Staley Viper Site. And that gives us an approximation of the coverage that you see on the image on the right. So the benefit with using the Viper towers, the state has agreed to let us use their towers, so we don't have to pay annual or monthly leases for that space, which would save a lot of money. And they will also allow us to use their back call network to communicate between the towers. That would be some more expenses that we would not have to do, the state would maintain that. So Mission Critical helped us design this system, we put that out to bid, and Motorola was the company that came back with the bid. So my request for you this afternoon is for the purchase of a VHF multi-site system for the amount of $995,292. And I will try to answer any questions, even though this is way, way out of my ballpark.
This is just curiosity, is the coverage area as neatly squared as that is?
No, they're cutting it off. Yeah, a couple miles outside of the county line, yeah. But it went further. And we're broadcasting at the max power with our current single-site system. When the FCC required a narrow band back in, I think, 2013 or so, that really kind of, we were forced to reduce our bandwidth. So we really had to turn the power up to be able to get the coverage. So that, this other system is not broadcasting nearly as strong as the other one. So we would still have the ability to turn it up if we needed to. But that's the current map that we would anticipate.
So this would include, some of our fire departments have districts in other counties, and just because, they may be in another county, but...
Right.
So that would, looked like it would cover any jurisdictional over into either Guilford or Chatham.
Yeah, if their members are across the county line, and their pager will still go off.
Just should go off without any problems based on the two maps.
Yeah.
Other questions? Any other questions? Alright.
So we'll hear all three of these and then take a vote at the end.
Alright.
Thank you, Jared.
Alright, next up, the other project we had for bids tonight is some renovation work that was necessary at the 911 Backup Center Roofing and HVAC. Paxton's gonna go over that very quickly for you.
Good evening, just to walk through this quick. This building, if you're not familiar with it, is just north of us here, in between this building, the Historic Courthouse, and the Economic Development Corporation Building. Here's a picture of the roof, this is a flat roof. So it's not uncommon that you go up there and actually see water standing on the roof. The good news is, we've taken multiple core samples, and it appears that the deck's in pretty good shape. So we do have some contingency in the contract in case we find some problem, we think it will be minor. Earlier this year, we hired Stuart Cooper Newell Architects. And initially, we were looking at doing a larger renovation project to try to add more workstations to match what's at the headquarters building. But as we got into it, we realized there just wasn't gonna be enough time to get the design and meet the deadline for ARPA. So we scaled it back and we got a proposal for just doing the roof only. Then when we actually met a roofing consultant out here, they recommended that we try to go ahead and address the rooftop units, which need to be replaced anyway, at the same time. So we did an addendum and added the rooftop mechanical and electrical. With this new roof, we'll have new insulation, we pitched, you know, two drains on the roof. And we did do a alternate. The base bid was a PVC membrane, which is considered a higher level of roofing membrane. But we did an alternate for a TPO roof, which is still a good roof. It's what we have on most of the county buildings, but it was looking at doing some cost savings. Back in November, we did the open of bids, and we only had one bidder. So we weren't able to open it, we had to re-advertise. Then on December 12th, we did a second bid opening, and we had 35 North and Owens Roofing. 35 North is a general contractor, Owens Roofing specializes in just roofs, and they were the low bidder. Sorry, I can't hardly see the, I should have brought my glasses. In this case, you know, a lot of times we will take the alternates. But in this case, you see the difference between the alternates. The general contractor had about $46,000 for their savings. Owens Roofing only had about $2,000. And the architect said that he was actually expecting around $40,000 savings by going with that roof. So he recommends that we do not accept the alternate, and we go with the base bid. So we're basically getting a $40,000 roof for $2,000. Owens Roofing, they've been in business for 38 years. They are a licensed general contractor, I've never worked with them before, but you're looking at their website, they've got a lot of commercial and government work. Matter of fact, this would be a pretty small project for them. Here's an updated budget, you can see the base bid, and then the add-ons with the architectural fees. The total may not match the budget adjustment exactly, because the initial architectural design was also included in Will's numbers, but it's, you know, it's pretty close. And so my request is that you award a contract to, a contract for the roofing at the backup 911. At cost of $496,069 to Owens Roofing, and that you award the budget adjustment and authorize the county manager to sign the contract. And I'm glad to answer any questions.
Any questions?
At any point, is the facility gonna be nonusable, in other words, just a backup 911? Is there any contingent, or what do we do? Is it gonna be unusable at some point, and how's that gonna be addressed?
Well, we'll coordinate with Donovan, you know, when they're actually doing work, so they can try to avoid it for training, but we really don't expect, even when the work's taking place, it may be a nuisance. But it would be, if something emergency happened, we should be able to go over there and operate if we needed to.
With HVAC, those units need to be cooled and that kind of thing, too.
Yeah.
Be tough if that was going on.
Yeah, time of year helps us there, because cooling's typically the issue there with, you know, getting too hot in those data rooms.
Is the, is the old roof coming off, or are we laying on top?
No, the old roof comes off, new insulation decking, and we'll actually pitch it to do drains and new downspouts.
You know about when it was, the one that's on there now, when it was put in?
I do not, I know it's old, just looking from the picture.
Right, I just didn't know, I mean, hazardous material-wise, if it's been tested.
We had it, we had it tested for asbestos, and it came back clean.
Good. Other questions, good question. Alright?
Alright, thank you.
Okay, to wrap up this first section, what we would like to request is that you award the bid to Motorola Solutions, 995-292, and authorize the county manager to sign the contract that will take care of the paging system, accept the bid by Owens Roofing for $496,069, and then approve the budget amendments that go along with that. And that will identify what we have left over in ARPA. And we'll talk about the sub-recipient next.
This is our first budget amendment. Any other questions? Do I have a motion on?
Also authorize the county manager to sign the contract.
Pardon?
Also authorize the county manager.
Yes, yes. Yeah, that's in here.
Thank you.
Authorize the county manager to sign. Do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to accept the paging system proposal by Motorola Solutions for $995,292, and accept the bid of $496,069 by Owens Roofing for the roofing and HVAC improvements to the 911 building, and authorize the county manager to sign the contracts. And lastly, to approve the budget amendments in the Coronavirus Recovery Fund and the various capital project funds as presented.
Do I have a second to the motion? Further discussion on the motion? Any other questions or discussion? Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Oppose no, and it's approved.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, the next major topic under ARPA is the water line connection between the city of Ashboro and the Water Authority. We have water that the county owns, treated water, that we would like to see used in most likely the eastern part of the county. And we've been working on that project for a while, engineers, we're not in a position where we could bid this out and have contracts in hand by December the 31st, '24. And for the past couple of months, we've had conversations with the Piedmont Tribe Water Authority, and they have agreed, and the board, their board has approved last week, a sub-recipient agreement. It's a long agreement, it dots the i's and crosses the t's with all the federal requirements, but it will allow us to commit the remaining $7,213,538 of ARPA money that's not been committed to all our other projects over the years. So we were gonna be able to retain these funds by making the Water Authority a sub-recipient. And we still hope that engineering, with all the easements and everything else, will be ready to be bid out in just a few months, but it was not before December 31st. So if the board's comfortable approving the sub-recipient agreement, we can commit all of our ARPA, direct ARPA funds that we received.
I would say this has been a part of our budget, our working budget, including the monies from the state for our Eastern Randolph Development Plan. This involves the water, the water line from the Random Lake to Ashboro. Do you want to... This was presented to the full Water Authority at our monthly, our December meeting this past Tuesday. meeting this past Tuesday. Had some questions. I don't know if you, it's a, it's a 40-page document. It, it's really not about the agreement with the county and the Water Authority as much as it is the county making sure that we're meeting all the necessary requirements to ensure we get this ARPA money, that we, it is properly encumbered. And it was passed, not unanimously by the Water Authority, there was one which was really a local Jamestown issue, really had nothing to do with this issue. So, but all the other members, Greensboro, High Point, Roundelman, Archdale, all voted to, to approve it. So it's been vetted.
That is on your behalf, regardless of you, if you wish.
Yes.
So if the board's comfortable with the subrecipient agreement, we'd ask you to approve that, and then related budget amendment that will make that happen in the ARPA fund. Or, I'm sorry, in the Piedmont Triad Waterline Fund. We did have to eliminate some of the accounts that we had in there, you know, since we were subcontracting that out. We will not receive the sales tax refunds. We had to remove that. That's part of the budget amendment, things like that. So this cleans it up as well.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion on this item? It is to approve the subrecipient agreement with the Water Authority.
Then I'll make a motion to approve the subrecipient agreement with Piedmont Triad Regional Water Authority to reflect the subaward of ARPA funds and update the anticipated project cost in the Piedmont Triad Regional Water Authority Water Connection Capital Project as presented.
I, I will second that motion, as Commissioner Ann, having gone through the process with the Water Authority, so I will second that motion. Further discussion or questions? Anyone? Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, no. And it's approved.
Okay, thank you very much. The last ARPA item for this evening has to do with program income. And this is one of those things that we've wrestled with, but apparently US Treasury is not going to change it. If you have a federal grant and you have income that's generated from that project, it goes back to the federal government. Well, if you're building a water line particularly, you are gonna charge water sewer rates. And so what do you do with those funds? Well, they'd never exempted that. And so, as it stands right now, we would have, if we make any money off these lines, we'll have to remit that. So this last item that is presented to you is to kind of hedge our bets a little bit. Go ahead and identify some nonprofit assistance that we've already made. In the event we have program income, we'll just claim those other expenses that have already been made and not have to return those funds. So this is just a way to kind of get our foot in the door, make sure that we're covered. In the event that the project's completed and we start to earn a little money. Of course, you know, we're not gonna own the line, it's gonna be the municipalities, but that doesn't matter. So what you have is a budget amendment, number...
Is this sort of a catch-all, or some balancing out?
Yep. We may not get any program income, and so this doesn't matter. But if we have made, this board has made the commitment prior to the deadline, then it's an active ARPA project, and we can tweak it later on if we need to.
And this pertains to program in, income by 2026?
By 2026. Once you get to December 26, as it stands now, that, that, you know, kind of wraps up the ARPA projects. And so at that point, we can remit these lines that we're building to the municipalities, and we're, and we're done.
So the question, the question on this side was just clarifying that, you know, this is only those two years. I, if there's revenue generated during that timeframe, we need to find out how to ensure we've obligated it now, even though we don't know what that revenue will be. The likelihood of us making any revenue on that line between now and this timeframe is very low. But just in case, we can say, we had this other previously expended ARPA-eligible dollar figure, and we can say that's what it was, and put it towards that and keep those dollars.
The most likely project that we would generate program income is probably the I-74 sewer line, where Ross would open up earlier than December of '26, and, you know, start to use some of the sewer. But the construction for the Piedmont Triad line is probably not gonna get wrapped up till pretty close to when that deadline is.
That's right. Anything else? Any other, any other, I know this was a little different.
This is just to protect us later on, so with any program income that's generated, we won't have to return that either.
But we're taking every chance to make sure we don't lose it, that it qualifies.
Yep.
All right. Any other questions or discussion on this issue? This one's a little different. All right, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to authorize assistance to impacted nonprofit organizations as an ARPA project, and approve the following budget amendment to the Coronavirus Recovery Project Fund as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second?
Go ahead.
Further discussion or questions? Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, no. Approved.
Okay, thank you all very much. Just to wrap up, the ARPA projects, I put up on the screen, just like major categories, how we have it broken down, the, the amount of funds that we've received, the projects that we've put. And Dana's got a handout that has the, you know, details by project. In a pie chart, that's sort of how that, that looks, you know. We wanted to make sure, I think from the beginning, that these funds were used for something that was gonna have an impact on this county and the water sewer lines that we've discussed, that we, that this board has approved. I think we'll do that.
Give you, this over, but that is, this, these are the dollars that go with what we've just been doing tonight.
We'll go back one slide, if you don't mind. I still want that right where I can access it anytime somebody asks me.
So that, that's how we've spent all of our, we will have spent all of our ARPA money.
Mm-hmm. Based on the decisions you made just recently, you know, with those two bids, this is how it shakes out.
The revenue replacement, a little more on that.
Uh, that's on the handout. You know, the $10 million was transferred to the general fund, and we used that.
Does that go back to, to the start with?
Well, what, what the revenue, you could do a calculation, but they made it easy. And for us, the $10 million default was more than what we would have shown for, you know, revenue loss. It was just easier to use that number, and it was larger. So that's what we have used. We made that election to use it. And you can see the, the dollar amounts there at the bottom of the page on, you know, how we've made those commitments. We still have, you know, almost $6 million still in the water fund, which gives us some flexibility for projects that were not eligible under the ARPA rules. So I think we're still set up for some flexibility with some of the dollars that were there.
I just wanted to give one more shout to our ARPA team, because the items that you're seeing tonight, these have been the, the fretting ones that you pull your hair out over, that maybe we weren't even expecting doing. The, the subrecipient avenue is complicated, 40 pages complicated. It was not the intention to do that, and, and they had to kind of pivot mid-course to, to make that happen, and work with the Water Authority staff to ensure they had proper policies in place that met federal requirements. So hats off to them for getting that done. And, and anybody that can understand this last item that we just voted on deserves a round of applause, anyway.
All right.
The final item tonight is, we'll bring Jared back up.
This, this does not require any action. We've already done that. So any questions on, on this handout? All right.
The last item on tonight's agenda is Jared. He's got another bid.
All right, the last thing I have is Viper equipment for the tower that, two weeks ago, you authorized us to, to award the bid to Keiko Construction. This, this is a request to purchase the equipment that will go on the tower, that will make this a Viper Tower, and then we can turn it over to the state. This was not Viper, I'm sorry, this was not ARPA-eligible, because the state gives us a list of specific equipment that we have to have. And because we couldn't bid that out, that was not ARPA-eligible. So we had funds for this available, and that's what this request is for, $731,642.07. The reason we're bringing it to you tonight is the, the quote that we have from Motorola expires at the end of the month, and they indicated that the, the price would go up in 2025. So we wanted to, to get this in, to get some cost savings.
Yeah, we, we've already budgeted for that.
Right. Yes, this isn't our budget.
This is the numbers now.
Yes. Yeah, so we're just requesting the authorization to purchase.
Right.
So if we don't do it, we got a tower with nothing put on.
Right.
All right, any questions, Jared? Do I have a motion on this item? Have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of required Viper equipment at a total cost of $731,642 per North Carolina 725G State Contract Purchasing for Motorola Solutions Incorporated.
Do I have a second? Motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, no. And it is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that completes our printed agenda tonight. Again, I want to say, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, for your cooperation and your wisdom in setting this out for us, and for Zeb and Will, setting this in a format that a little, little more easy to, to understand and sort of put on paper what we've been going through for a couple of years. So is there any other business to come before this board tonight? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Have a second?
Second.
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank all of you, and Merry Christmas, please.